This is item five, our public comment period. I don't believe we had anybody sign up to the public comment. However, I will, and I'll take chairman's privilege for just a second and recognize our hard work of Secretary Olivia Pierce. This is her birthday today. Thank you, Olivia, for all you did.
All right. Floyd's not here, so we can't.
All right. That'll bring us to item six, update report by the Director of Electric Utilities regarding customer service, business center practice, procedures and policies, billing procedures, and LPL staff and your performance. Mr. McCullough.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was just going to point out, as I use it, a couple of highlights of the report, and your staff can respond to any questions. You might have that end of this material. On page 14, bottom of page 14, you can see that we had an increase in traffic on the LPL.com website, and a lot of it was related to the news release and all the new information that's been posted out there during the 2019 play. So, big increase there. On page 18, I wanted to point, I just observed this for the first time today, I thought it called your attention, you probably have noticed it already, but if you look at that block on the right-hand side there, electronic payments, so the numbers that you read on the left are dollars, the numbers that you read on the right are numbers of customers that pay about that methodology, but if you look, in September, we had a huge increase in the number of people that pay electronically, and if you compare it with the two charts that are above that, and the one at the top is cashier payments, the one below that is mail payments, you see the significant amount of our payments is made electronically now, which I think is the goal that I've heard Jerry and other folks point to, and I think there's been some good progress in that area, and progress in the right direction, of course, electronic payments.
That's obviously significant. That increase is really significant.
Yes, of course, the...
Show the corresponding figures.
The...
Check the accuracy.
Well, the dollar amount of the payments is the bar chart there, which has gone up quite a bit, and of course, the number of payments has gone up quite as dramatically in September, but the overall trend on the number of payments is on the increase, so I think that's good.
But they've also had us both, if you add all three of them together for September, that's almost, that includes water, includes all the things.
Yeah, it's, just doing a quick math here, it looks like it's about a little over 110,000 payments in total. I guess that's about right.
Well, I wonder if they could fix it down?
Well, some of them are on same deal, so that'd be, you know, if you had water and sewer, all that on one, like, on one bid, all that would be one payment. So, anyway, I just thought that was interesting. So, the September statements, the note at the bottom of the page there, a lot of the September usage is for what electricity they really used in August, so it's kind of higher than you would think it should be for September, but again, that contributed to our high call, high call volumes and long wait periods, and, you know, it's expected that that would kind of trend lower as we get into the fall and winter months. And we also just hired 10 new CSRs. I was there for their first day and kind of had an orientation meeting, and it looks like we got a good crew of CSRs coming in.
David, do you think that increase is attributable to tech students?
Well, part of it, well, part of it is, for sure, and that's, you know, we commented on that, I think, at the last meeting, that this time of year, you have a large influx of tech students coming in, so it's probably part of it. Okay, on page 19 and 20, I just wanted to point to the changes we've made in this construction chart, commercial customer construction chart. We've added the date, the active date, which we will start adding these active dates every time we add new customer, new commercial properties to this list. Some of the older ones, we didn't go back and try to find the active date, some of them are going back to 2014. And then we also added the status code, so you have to go to the very bottom on the right-hand side there on page 20 to see what the code stands for, but so, you know, a lot of these are under construction, building is under construction, there's a few that are inactive, the B is for dirtwork, so there's a few of those that are dirtwork, and ID is the ones that are just in the design phase. So, a lot of them are still, are just now in the design phase, hadn't been a lot of work done on them. But that, one of the board members asked at one of the prior meetings if we could add some detail to this, so that's what we tried to do. If that's not what you want, we can do something different. And then, last, the last comment that I have is on the September daily load, as you can see, the, and this is on page 22. We're into the fall now, so as temperatures cool off or load starts falling, our minimum loads are falling in our max loads as well, so it's kind of the seasonal adjustment of our load, which means that our generation units, which have run a lot in August and September, will not be run as much, probably very little as we get into the cooler months. Any questions?
Questions? Comments? Thank you, Mr. McCullough. We'll take up item seven, and discuss financial and capital statements, financing options, audits, financial policies of local power and life relating to debt issuance issues, reserve accounts, funding, cost allocation, and revenue expense projections of local power and life. Mr. Bircham?
All right. Start with the normal monthly slide that we always begin with, an overview of the monthly charges for a rate-one customer. We've had rate stabilization in place now for 23 months, and you can see that illustrated beginning in December of '13 going forward. The average residential customer, again, this is the customer using 1,000 kilowatt-hours of energy throughout the month, would pay at this point time for the winter months, which is October through May, $194, which is about $9.50 less than what that same usage would have cost during the summer months. You can also compare that to where we were this time last winter. The average customer, you can see the service availability charge and the energy charge, those two together add up to about $32, which covers all the LPL operations, it includes the cost for the generating units, distribution transmission lines, the meter reading, the calculating, mailing, and billing of the statements, all the aspects, substations, all of those aspects, so about $32 a month, which is about a third of the bill, and the two-thirds of the bill is about $68 for the winter season, which covers all that pass-through of purchased power that we buy from XL Energy. So, that kind of gives you an idea once again there. Layering the rates, we always like to compare with what the customers in Amarillo pay. At the present time, they're about 71 cents lower than we are, they've been that way for about the last three months. However, if you look at the last 12 months, LPL customers have paid about $111 less than customers in Amarillo using the same amount of energy. So, for the last three years, or 36 months, we've been below the XL rates 31 of those months. The income statement, we're going to find on page 25 of your agenda backup, this is through August, fiscal year-to-date through August, and the operating revenues at this time of the year have been $199 million, which is about $2.6 million lower than this time last year, and the majority of that is directly related to the unit contingent agreement revenues from those agreements that expired last year. We have been able to contain our expenses from where we were this time last year, the controllable expenses, personal services, and supplies, maintenance, and other, we're down about $1.6 million from where we were this time last year. Biggest change on the income statement, which we've talked about, I think, every month this year, is the GASB 68 requirement, where we recognize the liability for our net pension obligation, which you can see this year is at almost $21 million, where last year, at the same time, there's nothing recorded there. This is not a cash item, not a cash outlay, this is an accounting entry only, so you can see the change in net position is pretty dramatic because of that entry, but if you eliminate that, if you take out that net pension obligation, puts you a little bit more in an apples-to-apples comparison with the prior year, you can see that our change in net position is about $5.4 million compared to about $6.6 million in the prior year, and again, a lot of that change is related to the lower revenues that we've received from unit contingent agreements. Next slide is our forecast for this year, you know, how we think from a budget basis, how we're going to end the year, and so our revenues, you can see that we're about $225 million in total. The largest driver, obviously, is the revenues we receive from our metered services, at about $216 million. That is less than what we originally projected in the budget, and so ultimately, we have passed lower costs on to our consumers, mostly related to the lower cost of purchased power. Also, off-system sales, which is the power marketing sales, and also these unit contingent revenues, you can see we're estimating we'll end the year about half of what we'd originally projected. Obviously, we had a cooler summer, especially in June and July, we also had some units down at Cook that lowered our revenues, so that has impacted that line item. All the other revenues gathered together are just slightly over what we projected, almost just right on target. On the expense side, we're about as much below budget as we are on the revenue side, again, that's related to the purchased power. Natural gas prices have remained low throughout the year, at least much lower than where we were when we put together this budget, so you can see that that's a real driver in keeping us below budget. On the cost center level, you can see that we're down about $3.5 million below what we would have budgeted to spend in our cost centers, and this even includes some expenses that, we're probably being a little bit conservative, I think we may become a little bit more below budget than this, but you really see the majority of our savings has come from production, and about $1.7 million below budget there from our customer service area, we're about $1.1 million below budget, and in the administration, we're about $750,000 below budget there. The next slide is a slide that we present to you every month, that's on page 35 of your agenda backup, but again, when we implemented rate stabilization, almost at the same time as when we started the pass-through of the, when the rate model was changed, we've been illustrating this on how we are, the revenues that we collect, our intent is always to collect the exact amount of revenues to exactly cover our cost of purchased power, which is never going to happen in reality, and so you can see in the months where the line is below the zero, we under-collect, and when it's above that zero line, we're over-collecting, and so you can see we began the program, over-collected for a few months, but for the last about 18 months, and those in the circle, we were, for the most part, in the under-collected status, and so basically, what that meant is the reserves that we hold were basically subsidizing the rates to our customers to cover that, because remember, we keep rates stable, and so this volatility, we manage that volatility rather than passing that volatility on to the customer. Last month was the first month in over 18 months that we actually went to positive territory, not only have we rebuilt our reserves that we'd set in place when this program began, which is $3.5 million, we're actually, at this point, about $2.2 million over-collected. We told you all throughout the summer that bear with us, we don't think we need to adjust rates upward, you know, when we were seeing red, our forecasting, the good work that Chad does, we were anticipating that we'd end up in positive territory by the end of the year, we just didn't know what happened on the last month, so the cool summer and all that didn't help us too much, but we're very pleased where we are, we're going to continue to monitor this, and again, the blue shading, the kind of rectangular blue shade is our bandwidth, we can, as long as we are within that blue range, we would not be needing to come back to you and request a rate change on that pass-through rate, so we'll continue to monitor that, and if we start to exceed that upper limit of that range, we'll be coming to you and giving you some direction on what we think would be appropriate to take care of. In this slide, again, this is where the rates were for customers, if they used 1,000 kilowatts over the same time period, I just wanted to do this to illustrate how stable it's been, and I think this has been one of those areas where we tried to benefit the customers and look out for their best interest, so they don't have to worry about volatility like we had before we implemented rate stabilization. My last slide is just the capital program expenses, the bottom portion of the slide, we spent about $800,000 this month on capital projects, about half of it was spent on distribution projects, about 17 different projects were worked on, or at least expenditures occurred in those. We also finished up the majority of our large vehicle purchases for the year, I think the majority of that was, like, the trucks that we purchased at the tail end of the year, but it kind of gives you an idea of where we stand. Still about a third of our total funding for our capital is in cash and two-thirds in bonds. So, that's kind of a quick recap of where we are through August and over the September, so if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Mr. Bircham, I wanted you to touch on another, one of the items you talked about briefly, if you look on page 26 of our backup material, that's the cash results through August 31st. The off-system sales and power marketing is about $1,009, and then our projected through September on page 27 is 3.41D, and that would be our generating units. The difference would be what they earn in that one month.
That is correct. Through the end of August, the $1,009 that we earned, really more than like it's a timing issue, that would have captured really all the revenues through July, and so in our September projection, it actually, that's going to be two months of revenues that have been layered in in that projection, so obviously, August and September were our big months on being able to have those units into the generating power and selling that into the market, so we did have the bulk of our revenue coming, we had expected that, we would have expected to have even more come in in June and July, if weather had qualified it and our units had cooperated, but yeah, you're correct, that that's a big bump for those last two months.
Anybody else have any comments, questions on the financial status? So, and I'll ask one more question, based on our, based on our projection forward on page 27, then we believe we'll have a surplus cash position about what's...
That is correct, yes, and, you know, we're anticipating, well, we know that we have the over-collection, which is about 2.1, so really, if you, you really should take that out of the equation, and so really, we really have a very, very minor deficit, 483,000, 483,000 out of a $245 million budget is almost just spot-on, so that would probably be the most accurate comparison against what we'd budgeted to have a slight surplus of about 700,000. Either case, to me, that's really about a balanced budget, it's about as close as you can get with it.
And as far as the gap, the gap statement, not counting the pension adjustment, you think will come in?
Yeah. Last year, on a gap basis, we had a net income of about $4.4 million. At this point in time, for which I'm being conservative, I'm seeing right about that same amount. I would hope that we might be a little bit north of that, but it's going to be very, very similar to what results we saw last year.
Any other comments, questions, anybody? Andy, thank you very much. Okay, let's go to item eight, report related to refunds of deposits to eligible customers as provided in electric rate tariff schedule, general terms and conditions, section 6.1, as recommended by the Electric Utility Board on June 16, 2015, and as adopted by the City Council of City of Lubbock on September 10, 2015 by Resolution Number 2015-R0310. And Mr. Bircham?
I got that again. This isn't really an action item for you, this is just some more informational, information for you. Our tariff that was just approved and had a slight change on the customer deposit side, it wanted to, we do collect deposits from customers when they establish service with us, for the most part, and you can, kind of giving you an idea of what we look at today, LPL does require a residential deposit of $135. On the commercial side, we require either the greater of $135 or one-sixth of the estimated annual charges. There are a number of reasons where customers can be exempt from having to place a deposit, which many are exempt to begin service with us, and there's four reasons in the tariff that are listed, and it can be any one of those four reasons, you don't have to meet all that criteria, but any one of those, and for example, number two there, if you've had, if you've been with another utility, moved into town from another city, that if you can provide a credit reference letter from your prior utility that you were in good standing and had, at least in the last 12 months, you know, you've been in good standing, then that deposit requirement can be waived. One thing, the tariff also does stipulate is that, you know, a deposit can be reapplied if you are disconnected for non-payment, so there is, is that always out there. Some of the eligibility requirements at this point in time, in order to be, have the ability to get a refund of your deposit is if you've been a residential customer for the last 12 months, or if you've been a commercial customer for the last 24 months, you could request a rebate of your deposit. You also, in addition to that, you would, could not have had any reminder disconnect notices, returned items, you could not have had your service disconnected, or you could not have any meter tampering charges over those 12- or 20-month, four-month periods of time, so as long as you meet those requirements, you are eligible for a refund. What the old tariff did was you had to specifically call in or request a refund, and so, you know, in an effort to kind of continue our philosophy of doing what's best for our customers, in this last tariff, the board and the council both approved that those would be automatically refunded once those eligibility requirements are met. So, as of November the 1st, we will be running a rebate or the refund to those customers who are impacted, looks like about 10,000 of our customers are currently eligible for a refund of their deposit, and so we have about $1.5 million that will be refunded to them during the month of November, whenever, it will be a credit applied to their account that will offset their, any charges they have for that month. On a going-forward basis, we anticipate there will be about 350 customers every month coming up for eligibility who will automatically, at that point, receive a refund, so we expect about $55,000 a month will be automatically refunded. I gave you a makeup of our deposits as of 9:30, obviously, these change on a daily basis as we get new customers in and as existing customers leave. First line is, shows those customers who are currently eligible in the amount. We have new customers, those who have been residential customers for 12 months or less, or commercial customers, 24 months or less, that makes up about 13,000 accounts, so that makes up about $1.9 million of deposits which are not currently eligible to be refunded, but if they maintain their eligibility after that 12- or 24-month period of time, they will be eligible to get refunds. There are about 20,000 customers who do not meet eligibility, they have either had disconnect or a non-payment or meter tampering, so that makes up about 20,000 customers' accounts, totaling about 3.1 million of deposits, and then we have about 55,000 customers who don't have a deposit with us at the present time, so the majority of our customers don't even have, either when they signed up for service or over the years have not been required to put down a deposit, so that kind of gives you a total, these are accounts, I know we sometimes throw around 103,000 meters, but these are actually accounts where we pay deposit, we normally be charged, so that kind of gives you an idea, about 6.5 million is what we have on deposit right now, so we'll see that level out to about $5 million going forward, so on your financial statements, on your balance sheet, where you have a liability that states customer deposits, that'll be around the $5 million range after we rebate these deposits this month. So, just wanted to give you all an update, and thought that was good news for those customers who are eligible for that, and about $1,005,000 going back into the economy.
Andy, I just, a quick question for you. Is there a particular reason why you said refunded in November?
Well, you know, the tariff just came into place October 1, and so we have just now gotten all the computations done and have all the eligibility requirements in place. These, those eligibility requirements are triggered through our system, and so once all those triggers are met, they will automatically start, so now that we have all that in place, November 1st was really our first opportunity to get that back to our customers.
Does this just help P&L only not the other utilities?
Currently, none of the other utilities require a deposit. Now, let me do state that, for example, you have, you have a $50 bill for electric and a $50 bill for water, to keep it simple, and you don't make that payment, your deposit will kick in, that deposit's going to cover the electric and the water payment, so it actually, in a lot, some of those cases, it will still apply to some of those funds, even though it may not be solely electric, I think over time, you know, it can be attributed to electric, but, so it works, the billing mechanism works in that manner, so typically, though, the deposit will cover mostly just the electric.
Any questions? So, me and a half, one will be with you.
Yes.
Let's move on then to item number nine. Consider a resolution authorizing or directing or directing electric utilities to execute and follow far and on behalf of the City of Lubbock, acting by and through Lubbock Power and Life, all plinkings, reports, studies, or other filings at the Electric Liability Council of Texas and/or the Public Utility Commission of Texas, award migration and proportion of LPL's loads to Urco, and to present testimony and otherwise provide support for the management of the DUC related to the same, and attend and participate in discussion with the City Council of LPL. Mr. Kessler, do we need to read that whole resolution, or is that...
The posting was pretty specific. I think you almost did. This resolution is basically the formal approval by the Electric Utility Board, and there's a companion resolution, as well, to be acted upon by the City Council today at the pleasure, basically giving the formal approval and direction for David to do or cause to be done, other things, to move that applicable portion of the law to a...
Is that a requirement, or just to courtesy him, so David can say, "Look, I think I often have to do..."
I think it's going to serve several purposes, sooner or later, it will be necessary as we move and make commitments, financial commitments, there's going to have to be some authority to do that, and then secondly, there's going to be some representations and warnings that we have to make at Urco that are going to be, among many other things, we'll have an authority future to them as well, so I think that we're going to have to have that, and the City, we respectfully ask the City to jump in, because there will be, in all likelihood, during this process, commitments for debt issuance which rest solely within the jurisdictions of the City, budget approval mechanisms that rest solely within the jurisdictions of the City, so we've asked both government bodies to authorize and direct these actions.
You're taking motion. Awesome. As described in item nine, I agree. Motion made in second on the resolution. Any discussion? Historic formal moment. All those in favor, please say aye. Thank you all very much.
City Council cited a year ago about 4.4 as the board and City Council lists, consider a resolution authorizing and directing the director of electric utilities to execute and follow far and on behalf of the City of Lubbock, acting by and through Lubbock Power and Life, our budgeting, report, studies, or other filings at the Electric Reliability Council of Texas and/or the Public Utility Commission of Texas, award migration and proportion of LPL's loads to Urco, and to present testimony and otherwise provide support for Urco and/or the DUC related to the same. You have a copy of the resolution, I want to hear any motion.
Mr. Colonel?
Second. Motion in secondary discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All follows to motion carries 4-0.
It's going to be all your fault.
Motion carries 4-0 with a stern warning. Well, and I'll stop here for just a second and just say how much I appreciate, again, everybody's work on this, and all of our staff's work on this, and the work... work of this, and the work of this board, this City Council, it's just great, it's great to be with them.
Especially the leadership of LPL and the people that have taken, how proud I am of the work that you've done.
All right, let's go to item 10. Consider a resolution recommending to the City Council five appointments to the Electric Utility Board in accordance with section 2.034415 of Code of Ordinances, City of Lubbock, Texas. I believe the resolution is on page 38 of the materials. And basically, the resolution, we have to recommend the names to the City Councils. And the resolution basically asks the City Council to rule the point, the existing five who are up to report this time, which is myself, Mr. Bell, Mr. Bultner, Mr. Dunn, Mr. Conrad. And unless someone wants to add other names, that would be the resolution. So.
I'd like to make a comment before I run the motion.
I've got more history in this room than anybody that put up in 2002, and have seen the most amazing transformation from not just this board, not just its relationship with the City Council, but of the entire electric utilities as a whole. And I just want to encourage y'all to make the recommendations back to council to keep this group to the credible time, to hit it in the right direction. And I think it's vitally important that we keep this team operating for the year.
Thank you, Mr. Murray.
I wouldn't do that as strongly.
I was shocked. Well, y'all get to have that discussion.
We can do that front there ourselves, yeah. We'll call them under the bus.
I move that we approve the resolution, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Conrad. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eight, zero. Thank y'all very much. Okay, item 11. Discuss and take amended action setting the date and place in the November 2015 meeting of the Electric Utility Board. I believe our current calendar would have a regular meeting following the 17th.
17th, yes, sir.
And there is a meeting that our staff needs to be at, so we're asking that we move that to the 19th, I believe. And the last time we did this was during spring break. We moved the, the meeting, and we did take the amended action on that. So, that's, that's what that's about. That would be the plan at this point. The time might change, but the date will be known.
We talked about possibly having it that morning, I think, because there's a council meeting.
That's right, that's right, that's right.
I'm going to be in Coleman, Texas. Not hunting, working in Coleman, Texas on that day, but if we have form, and everybody else can be.
All day? Can anybody?
I can do it Wednesday, 18th or the 25th.
Well, that's my. Don's retired income, he's been on any debt.
Yeah, he's in debt.
I can't remember off the top of my head what the company was.
I don't have conflict on my calendar on the 18th.
It seems like you did have something. Yeah. Well, let's, let's go ahead and, let's go ahead and select the 18th. Does that mean you're, Trump?
Yes.
No, Jane, you're still in the meeting. Anybody else? Well, if we had on 18th, we could have. I'm just counting those as all the reasons I'm going to be. Okay. So, I entertain a motion to set the date of the November meeting for November 18th, 2015. Got a motion? Second by Ms. Hill. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so that brings us to the consent agenda, items 12, 13, 14, and 15, which are on your current agenda. I will, no one has said they want to do those pull for discussion, so I'll entertain a motion. Motion made by Mr. Bell, second by Ms. Hill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's eight, zero. So, that carries the consent agenda, and brings us to item 16. So, Electric Utility Board, moving adjourned. Mr. Council. Thank you.
I'm photobombing the webcam. I need, I need to put in a question.
You're not on.
We're listening carefully. This is a credit on your end.
Well, thinking of what we refunded, I'll throw it back in.
Oh.
I recorded, and I'm like, here.
Damn dude, that's the volume.
Are we all at our level?
He's like the only media.
Why are y'all here? Isn't that like a home alive?
No.
This is five for Karen.
Yeah, that's true.
It's not a matter of me, it's a matter of what?
But I appreciate you pointing that out.
I'll call you sometime later today. I'm not sure why, but. Andrew, are you using a lava stick? Can you set him up where he gets here so I can square up?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, I'll probably be looking at you.
The number of payments.
I was just trying to look at mine.
Yeah, I'll just stand over here.
Just so we don't get earshot.
Well, we're all pretty close.
That's right.
Oh, you want to scoot in?
Or do you want me to stand in between?
Oh yeah, I guess that's a good call.
Water too. I don't know, dude, I don't know. It's just electric.
It's actually what they call light. Thomas Edison. I don't think it's like that one. I think, I think his light was more efficient than this one. Yeah, these cameras have like. Describing, I don't know. Placecam's have like five buttons to them. I have to give a tutorial over the cameras. And access Karen's with the tutorial. So the test was, if I can't describe it to Karen, then I don't know my camera. And long and behold, it was like, so what is this? What does this do? Why would I use that? Like, oh my gosh. And like, I always keep it simple the first time. Talk about white balance.
See, I just do this. I say, "Look, you can set it on auto." I only do it, I only do it in here because we have problems where sometimes the shutter turns on and I go over, I just want to hit the shutter.
Okay, that's pretty simple.
Literally right there.
Yeah, that's the auto one. I missed that one too.
But I just, I always end up doing it, and it, like, we've had people come back where you can't use their video because there's no lights going. Yeah. So I'm like, you know what? Under these lights right now, I'm just going to auto.
Remember when I first learned that? It was bad.
So I have, at least right now, I'm like, I'd rather be sitting in this right here.
I did good. I passed. I scrubbed it. Filter, iris, focus, white balance.
We always have, I said that, no, it hasn't, well, what's this still on there? And that is my laser button. We, on most of the cameras, I got them, so they weren't a preset. And then someone went back in and was moving them back.
How much the expanded, or the expanded zoom work? Yeah. It only works like, it doesn't show up in your shot. Yeah.